Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Glendale Transportation and Parking Commission. Item number one, please.
Here.
Here. Next item, please. Please rise. Thank you. I don't see approval of minutes. Is that something that we missed? Okay. On the next agenda meeting. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Next item is oral communications. I do have two speaker cards, and if you want to speak, please fill out a request. They're in the back. I'm going to take -- well, actually, I don't have one for oral communications. I do have them for public hearing. So I'm going to close oral communications, and we move on to the next item. Item number four.
Item four is public hearing. Report regarding application for renewal of an owner's permit to operate taxi cab service in the city of Glendale by GNS Transit Management, Inc., DBA City Cab. At 4A1 is a motion to approve the application with findings for an owner's permit to operate taxi cab service in Glendale by GNS Transit Management, Inc., DBA City Cab. And at 4A2 is a motion to deny the application for an owner's permit to GNS Transit Management, Inc., DBA City Cab, and continuing the matter with no further public notice, January 26, 2015.
Thank you. Mr. Golanyan, do you have a presentation on this?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Before I start, I'd like to introduce to you Ms. Mia Yun, our Assistant City Attorney, who has replaced Bobby Aldesco as the attorney who will be residing here with me and helping us out with the Commission's --
Welcome.
Mr. Chair, we have received an application for an owner's renewal from City Cab to operate 15 vehicles in the city. Currently, we have a cap of 82 permitted taxi cabs operating in our city. City Cab is not requesting to increase their fleet, and we have evaluated the application and found that they are in good standing and have satisfied all the conditions required by the Glendale Municipal Code. In addition, Steve Rodriguez, our code compliance inspector, has conducted a physical inspection of the vehicles and found them to be in conformance. With that said, we respectfully recommend that the Transportation and Parking Commission approve this application for renewal, and Anusha and I and Steve are available to answer any questions you may have. Also, City Cab's representative, I believe, have a short presentation, if you'd like to see that.
Yes, please. We'll see the presentation now.
Well, open the public hearing, please.
So we want to do the cars first? Oh, the hearing? Okay. So I do have two cars. I'm going to open up the public hearing, and the first person is Sheldon Baker.
Mr. Chair and members of the Commission, I'm Sheldon Baker, and I represent the applicant, GNS Transit Management, Inc., doing business as City Cab. Applicant, as you've heard, requests the renewal of their existing owner's permit for 15 taxi cabs in Glendale for a five-year period. Applicant has served Glendale since 1994, a 20-year period. It operates cabs throughout Southern California, including the Tri-City area, and it serves the Bob Hope Airport. And I'll mention that they also manage for the Bob Hope Airport the flow of taxi cabs, all cabs, in and out of the airport and in and out of the holding area. They're well-respected in the industry. They have an outstanding service record. They maintain the condition of their cabs. They have an on-time, outstanding record for being on time with their customers, the training of their drivers, and all phases of their operation. Thirteen of their 15 cabs are hybrid, and they meet all age standards and other standards for the cabs. They're constantly inspected. Applicant has long been a leader in providing technology and innovations to better serve the riding public, and it continues to do so. And I'll give you a couple examples. In October of this year, City Cab installed new credit card processing units in the backseat of all its fleet to allow customers to process credit cards by sliding their cards into the unit. City Cab has also installed a Curb mobile application, and you're going to hear more about that, because I can't tell you all about it, I'll be honest with you. But that will be launched on or before January, and that'll be a real benefit for the riding GNS City Cab's goal has always been, and will continue to be, to serve the riding public through GNS's drivers, their cabs, their improved technology, and to maintain its safety records and its on-time service. Your report covers these efforts in greater detail. As your report states, "This is an application for renewal, and therefore, public convenience and necessity have previously been satisfied." However, I will want -- I do want to say something about that. Applicant's actions and performance records, its demonstration again and again of the satisfaction of the riding public who uses and takes advantage of GNS. This is clear proof of satisfying public convenience and necessity. More than 60,000 trips are taken annually in GNS's cabs and vehicles annually here in Glendale. Sixty thousand annually. That clearly proves convenience and necessity. We urge your approval of the application for renewal for five years of GNS's permits. If you have any questions, we'll try to answer them. But we thank you very much for your attention and allowing us to make this presentation. Maybe before the questions, if you'd permit, Mr. Chair, to allow the next speaker, I think you have his card, to come up and tell you all about the new technology.
Yes. Is that Mr. Lev Vanschelbaum?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Very good. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the committee. My name is Lev Vanschelbaum, and I'm with the company Curb. We'll have a short PowerPoint, so you kind of help you keep along. But basically, Curb and City Cab have partnered to provide --
You're fine.
-- to provide consumers a way to book a taxi cab using our latest technology on the app. But before we even start with that, I want to first commend the management and the drivers of the City Cab fleet, that they have accepted the technology. They realize that, you know, you need to innovate and stay with the latest technology. So they partnered with us to -- and I'm going to talk about two pieces of technology that will help the riding community. The first one is the -- well, let me tell you about our company first. We are a company that's based in -- have been founded in 2008. We have -- we work with fleets across the United States, 120, over 120 fleets across the country. Some of the information is on there. I know I'm limited on time, so I just want to jump in. The first piece of technology is the app. Nowadays, everything is -- everything's through the phone, right? Everything is booked either online or through the app. And our app will be able to provide local residents, as well as folks visiting from out of the state or out of the local area, opportunity to book a cab. You can, as you can see, some screenshots of what the app looks like. Customer can book a cab, see the cab coming to get them with information about the driver, the cab number, and so on. So it's very clear, and they can identify the cab very easily. Once they get into the cab, they can pay through the app with a credit card that's on file, and they have an opportunity to rate their experience, and they also will get a receipt at the end of the process to their phone, as well as email to them. So this is what the app experience looks like. Just to reiterate, the advantage of working with us is not only are we in L.A., not only are we in this local area, but we also work with fleets across the country. So a rider that has the app can order a cab in San Francisco, here locally, Chicago, Dallas, and other places, other cities that we work in. Lastly, the second piece of technology that we want to talk about, as was mentioned before, is the credit card machines that are being installed in every cab. And again, this will allow a customer that street hails the cab to pay, gives them a choice. They can either pay cash, or they can pay with a credit card. And if you want to take a look at this, it's -- I can leave it here for you guys to take a look. But basically, the customer swipes a credit card the end of the ride, they get a receipt, all the information is clear, displayed on the screen in front of them. Lastly, just to summarize, the app provides, just all of these technological upgrades that the City Cab, the fleet, has taken, is here to benefit the public. It's here to benefit the folks that need to book a cab. So now they have a choice. They can either call the cab company, they can book it online, they can book it through a text message, they can book it through an app. And it gives them payment options. They can pay cash, they can pay with a credit card, or they can pay through the app. So again, this is all to benefit folks that are using the taxis. And we're looking to launch with the local fleet, as was mentioned before, by January, around January 1st. We invite you to try us. I have some cards with discount codes, so if you'd like, I'm going to leave some here for you, and if you want to take some and pass them out to your friends, for you and for them to try the app and experience it. I think that's all I have. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask. I'll leave this right here.
Thank you for the presentation. I do have some questions, and I'm sure my colleagues, they do have some questions as well. Any questions regarding the app?
Yes. Actually, you said there are 120 fleets across the country. In what specific markets have this been active, and when were they activated?
We are -- oldest fleet is in Los Angeles, city of L.A. We have fleets that we work with in -- I don't remember all of them by heart, but the biggest cities are Chicago. We are working with a fleet in Portland, with fleets, I'm sorry, multiple fleets. Some cities have more, as, you know, some cities have more than one fleet. So this, we work with a number of fleets. We work with fleets in San Francisco, New York, Chicago, Dallas, I mean, across the country.
In markets where there's unions, like Las Vegas, have anyone been using this kind of app?
We are in the works. We are in talks with Las Vegas. I can't really tell a whole lot of information about it, unfortunately. But we are working with folks in Las Vegas.
In terms of the gadget you just showed.
The what?
The machine?
The machine, yes.
Sure.
This is -- Do you like to see it?
No, no. It's strictly for use of the passenger.
Correct. It's located in the backseat of the cab, and the passenger, at the end of the trip, once the driver stops the meter, it displays the total amount, and the customer, if he chooses to pay with a credit card, can swipe the credit card, select a tip amount, and so on.
In other words, the taxi driver will not touch the --
Correct.
-- his credit card.
The beauty, the reason, one of the things that we pride ourselves on is the integration with the fleet, which means, once we integrate with the fleet in terms of technology, so when the meter is turned off, whatever's on the meter is what the customer is going to be charged, whether it's going to be via the app or the credit card machine. The driver doesn't have, doesn't do anything. They don't need to enter any information. It's, this helps in avoiding driver errors. You know, sometimes folks can mistype and enter the wrong amount, or whatever it is. But basically, whatever's on the meter, that's what displays on the machine, and that's what the customer pays with, again, whether it's the credit card or the app.
What are the mechanism in order for a consumer not to pay twice by app or by credit card, for example, or by cash? Are there any mechanisms in place for the consumer not to be paid, charged two or three times?
Sure. I can go into detail, and we'll be here forever, because I love talking about this stuff. But basically, if you're paying with an app, this machine locks down, so you can't swipe a credit card.
Okay.
And there's other things in place, and again, we can be here forever. But we do have steps to make sure that the customer's not double-charged.
I used it in New York this week on many occasions. I was on the East Coast, and it worked very well. Once you swipe it, it gives you the option to pay tip 15, 18, or 20 percent.
Right. Breaks down the tip.
So you add that on, and for the first time --
It's fully up to the customer.
Yeah. It was extremely convenient. And they all had them, all the taxi cabs in New York.
What is the app called?
Curb.
Curb.
Yep.
And it's universal across nation?
Exactly.
Okay.
So if you have the Curb app, if you are in D.C. and you want to book a cab, or if you're in Chicago and you want to book a cab, or in Portland, if you want to book a cab, or L.A., use the same app. It triangulates your location and sends you to the nearest cab.
But the app is independent from the credit card payment system?
Correct. Correct. Those are two separate systems.
Okay.
I have a quick question, please.
Sure.
Thank you for your presentation.
No, thank you.
You may have said this, and I missed it. If you're going to purchase or order the cab through the app, does it give you an estimate of the cost?
Yes. So it shows you, the beauty of it, and a lot of customers love that part, is that it shows you the cab on the map, and it shows you coming, the cab coming towards you. It also displays the driver's picture, and it's, you can't really see it on there, it's not, you'll have to zoom in a little bit. But basically, it shows you the driver's, gives you the driver's name, gives you the cab number, it shows you the cab moving towards you, and the rider and the driver can contact each other to make sure that they, to help them find each other. So --
Does it also give you an opportunity to rate the driver?
Yes.
And the driver to rate the --
Very important. Very good question. Very important question. At the end of the trip, the rider gets a receipt, and part of that is they have an opportunity to rate their experience, and we take pride in taking a look at all of those, all of that feedback, and making sure we work with the best drivers.
And does the driver get to rate the passenger?
The driver doesn't get to rate the passenger, but if they need to reach out to us about a specific passenger, they can.
I understand other apps that are using this type of communication allows the driver to rate the passengers.
Yes. Our system, because we integrate with the computer that's in the computer, I'm sorry, the computer that's in the cab, and there's no need for additional, you know, additional phone to be there for a driver to be distracted. Our orders come in through the existing computer that's already in the cab. So it has certain limitations, so we can't have the rating of the rider.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of questions. That was one of my questions, as far as the rating. Now, besides, aside from rating the driver, can you rate the cab itself? If it's clean, if it's, you do have those parameters in there?
Basically, we have, you know, the stars, which is pretty, we've learned that if we give customers too many options, a lot of times, they won't do it. So we have it where the customer rates using the stars, and they also have space for comments. And a lot of times, the riders will put comments about the cab experience. So they'll say, "The cab was clean," or "The driver was very friendly," or "The cab wasn't so clean." So, and we follow, forward that information to the fleet. We work with the fleet in terms of providing them the feedback, and they can address it from there.
Is there a mechanism in place to send the rating information to our inspectors directly, without going through any other channels?
I would have to check into that.
If you can, please do, because it has a great advantage.
Sure.
Another question that I have, as far as credit cards on file, will you have the option of inputting a couple of credit cards, one being a business card, the other one a personal, and giving the rider, if he's on a business trip, the option of charging it to his business card versus personal card?
Sure. Short answer, yes. You can have multiple cards stored, and when you select, when you order the cab, you select which credit card you would like, which credit card you would like to pay with. So yes.
Okay.
I have one other question.
Of course.
I meant to ask it over here. Can you please, maybe this is best answered by City Cab, this technology, is this an increase to the passenger for the rides?
Is it what I'm saying?
Is it an increase in the rates for the passengers? The cost for putting this in?
So the, as I mentioned before, our company plays by the rules, and we pride ourselves in that. One of those things is, whatever's on the meter is what gets charged to the customer. We charge a, if it's booked through the app, we charge a dollar fee, but other than that, it's whatever's on the meter, plus the tip that the customer selects.
But the rates that have been, that the cab has been charging, once the system is in, are the rates going to go up? Aside from the $1 charge?
No. We charge whatever's on the meter. So whatever the fare, the rate that has been decided on by regulation, that's what we charge. We don't, we don't do surge pricing.
Commissioner Gonzalez, the rates that have, we, the city regulates by ordinance are set in place, and they cannot exceed that. I believe what the gentleman refers to is a convenience fee for using the app.
Right. But other than that, the rate is what has been set by the city, and that's what we --
So the convenience fee is added to the meter rate that's displayed? No. That's something that the company will be paying you?
No, no. The customer pays us.
Customer pays you.
Right. And that's just, that is, when the customer books it, it tells them that upfront, that there is a dollar fee, and most of our --
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question, but not about the app.
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. So my, I noticed under special programs, something that's really interesting that I like, but haven't heard about, was that during certain times of the year, you provide free rides to prevent drunk driving behavior. I've never heard that before, and I think a lot of people in the community would be interested to know about this. So what kind of outreach strategies do you use? Can you tell us a little bit more about that program?
Timmy, moderator, president of GNS. We advertise everywhere. I mean, most, a lot of citizens know about it, they're using it, so I don't know what you're saying. A lot of people are using it.
I'm just curious if, what methods you use. I mean, I would like to let my friends know about it, so if there's something that I can reference, or if you have certain dates that you have.
Lot of advertising. We send the brochures to the houses, we send, we advertise on Facebook, we do everything we have to let the people know this is available.
Okay. I'll start following you on Facebook.
Sure.
Thank you.
How does it work? I'm just curious. If you can just elaborate on that.
How does it work?
Yes. If on specific nights?
If it's a senior citizen, and they show the senior citizen card, and shows it's a senior citizen, we give him discount 10 percent.
Okay. And as far as driving on nights where, let's say you're --
Celebrated too much?
Yes. You celebrated too much.
There are some bars call us, there's a drunk person here. Sometimes we give him free rides, sometimes we just give him 10 percent discount, or $5 discount.
Okay.
It's in the program.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. If you have no further questions, appreciate the time, and again, we urge your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, President Sahakian, we need to close the public hearing.
Yes. I'm going to close public hearing, and any comments from the commissioners? Start from my left.
I don't have any comments about this particular motion. I think it's fine. I do have a concern, however, and I think I've raised this in the past, that we do have a cap in the city of 82, and we have existing companies that come to us for renewing their license to operate in the city. I do wonder what happens at some point if a new company comes into play, and they want to request X number of taxi cabs to operate in the city. You know, even if it's just one additional company with one additional taxi cab that exceeds our cap. So how does staff handle that? How would we, how would you expect us to handle that? I'd like some clarification on that.
Chair Sahakian, members of the Commission, Commissioner Baruchisov. As you know, the cap was established by the Transportation and Parking Commission earlier. So any new applications will come in front of you for consideration, but they will have to demonstrate public necessity and convenience. I wasn't present at the time, but I believe Mr. Sahakian, Commissioner Sahakian --
The cap was established before me.
Oh, okay. In any event, there was quite a bit of deliberations that was generated and discussed amongst the commissioner, who, based on, again, public necessity and convenience, decided on that 82 number. But if we believe, if an applicant believes that there is a need for a greater number, then that's up to you for evaluation, consideration, and final decision. But the demonstration of the public necessity will have to be borne by the applicant.
What year was that about?
Anush, do you remember?
Five years, seven years?
Definitely longer than five.
No. It was, I, no, we can find out.
You guys can find out. And at the time, I recall, I asked the same question, because I wanted to know the reasoning behind the number 82. And I wasn't given a direct answer, but our position, my position, has been that you really need to show need and necessity to be able to add or move in, because, as is, we have traffic congestion issues, and last thing we want is to add additional vehicles within the city limits. But, for example, one criteria would be to look at response time and what's acceptable from the minute that you place the call. Does it take 10 minutes, 15 minutes, 20 minutes for response? So, you know, those are some, some parameters that we look at, I believe.
I just want to express concern about that, because there will be a point at which a new company will come in and will want to operate in the city. And I don't think that we're well-equipped to make a decision like that with the way this cap is going, and with the way the renewals are coming in. I don't, I'm not sure that we're going to be able to handle that in a way that's fair for everybody. So it seems that the way that we're accepting these approvals, these renewals, it just seems to me that we're grandfathering in the people who are already doing business here, and that's, that's fine. But I want to be prepared for, I want the commission to be prepared, that if a new company comes in and wants to operate here, do we reject them just because they haven't operated here in the past? So I'll leave it at that.
I believe we've done that. I mean, I've been here for some time now, and I recall, only, I believe, one company that came to the commission and asking for additional cabs, and it was turned down because the commission didn't feel that the need and necessity was presented to us the right way. way. It's going to be a challenge, I do agree with you.
In addition, I think taxis are competing with Uber anyways, and there's too many Ubers roaming around the city the way it is anyways. Because I know, I never used Uber, I haven't been, last time I was in, used a taxi, was in New York probably a year ago. But I know a lot of people who have Uber, and they, as soon as they turn on the app, there's too many of them roaming around. And by adding more taxis, we're adding more congestion to the city, I believe.
And it doesn't only apply to taxicabs, it also applies to other transportation services that, that also come to the commission for permitting. Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion? We have two options.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion to approve, yeah, number one.
Seconded.
Okay, roll, please.
Mr. Kurkjian?
Yes.
Mr. Yakubian? Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Bartusov?
Yes.
Chairperson Sahakian?
Yes, thank you.
Let's move to the next item, item number five.
Item five is an action item, a report regarding parking meter fee increase at 5-1. It's a motion recommending commission to increase the parking meter fee to $1 per hour in the Montrose Shopping Park.
Mr. Golanyan?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, in 2008, the city council increased the parking meter fee to $1 an hour in downtown Glendale, as well as in 2012, the meters near and around Glendale Community College, as was identified in our adopted mobility plan. The request here in front of you is to increase the parking meter fees at the Montrose Shopping Park from 50 cents an hour to $1 an hour. This would create a consistent on-street parking meter fee throughout the city. It will increase parking turnover and generate additional revenues that we use towards parking-related expenses in the shopping park. We've had several meetings with the Montrose Shopping Park Association, and we just recently received a letter in support of the increase. The map behind me shows the areas where we have 142 street meter parking spaces that the increase will take effect, and we are recommending that you approve the motion to recommend the city council to increase the fee in Montrose Shopping Park as well.
Yes, and, and on this item, Mr. Golanyan, I was a little confused as far as, and it could be maybe the way I read it, as far as the hour limitations, because the MSPD, if you read their letter, they're under the impression that we're decreasing the duration to one-hour parking from two-hour, and that's about it. I just want to make sure we don't...
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Chair Sahakian, that's a very good point, but Mr. Dombrowski, our parking manager, has met with the Shopping Park Association personally, at least on two occasions that I know of, and they are, they should be pretty clear as what the recommendation is to increase the rate, and they're, they have been supportive of it.
Okay, so we're increasing the rate, at the same time, we're changing the limit to one-hour parking?
Chairperson Sahakian, what, what the goal is, they don't view it as an increased rate, they view it as you'll pay the same rate, but you'll get less time, which means it'll increase the turnover. So the goal for them was to increase the turnover and get more customers, more availability for their customers on-street, so they're not seeing it as supporting a meter increase, they're seeing it as a reduction in time.
I see.
For the same amount of money that you would have purchased before.
And they understand that.
They understand it completely, and we're not changing the signs from two-hour parking to one-hour parking.
Okay.
That what we're doing is increasing the fee in the meters.
Okay.
But it supports their end goal, which is increasing the turnover.
As long as we're clear on it, because we don't want to take any action on an item, and next thing you know, hell breaks loose. Okay, any questions, commissioners?
Yes, I was just curious, the parking lots that are there, I guess are the ones that are numbered, is that correct? That's free parking, right?
Yes, Commissioner Gonzalez, there are free parking. Up to three hours?
Four hours, I believe, right?
It's three and six.
Correct, we have some that's three-hour, four-hour, and nine-hour parking, depending on where and in which lot.
My kids go to school over there at Sisters Academy, which is on Floridida, and I didn't realize that we have so much free parking, as much as 589 parking spaces back there for public to utilize. How are we advertising this? Do we have any, like, can we put signs where the meters are, where we're increasing the rates, that you have free parking in the back? Because on day like this, people may want to pay the fee rather than parking in the back, and use the parking space on Honolulu, for example, for two, three hours. How are we advertising this, and to make it more, to have more turnover on Honolulu, or areas that are in red?
Commissioner Kurkjian, one of the things when I spoke with the merchants was that they have a recurring base of customers. A lot of these people are residents in the area that come to Montrose, and they understand where the parking is. Over time, they've learned that the lots are behind it, and all of the merchants communicate it to their customers. Whenever they have a complaint, "I couldn't find parking out here on Honolulu because it was full," or any of those types of things, they're communicating it in real time when they have the customer in front of them, and saying, "Here's where you can park instead." We do get some requests from, from the public. In general, we put the map up on our website that shows that there is free available parking behind a lot of these businesses that, that many people don't know about, and we do have some signage up there that we relocated about a year and a half ago to try and clear it from where the trees had overgrown, to try and make it more convenient for the public that was driving around to be able to see where the, the parking is available.
For example, this Saturday is Montrose Parade, and I'll be there with the kids and with the school, and the parking probably are going to be full. Now, the question is in twofolds. A, where are the employees' parking, employees or the business owners themselves? And if since the, the free parkings are three hours and six hours and nine-hour parkings, are they enforced? The reason I'm asking is because what if, on day like next, on the Saturday, the neighbors, people from a few blocks away are park, are using city parking spaces, and we're defeating the purpose of having these free parking spaces for the people who are going to attend the parade?
Well, there will be, will be no parking allowed on the parade route, correct?
Yeah, correct. For the, for the parade route, it will, I believe it's on Honolulu itself, and all of that parking is blocked off.
Talking about the free parking space in the back.
And for an event of that scale, all of the parking fills, all of the street parking, all of the lot parking, private parking, everything fills for, for an event like that.
What if some neighbor a few blocks away, or they don't use their own parking lot, they're putting, using city parking spaces, how is it enforced, the three hours and six hours?
I believe for most of the hours, the hour limits, those are only enforced during the day anyways, from effectively nine to six. So in the evening hours, anyone who would park there after three or four o'clock, that time limit wouldn't apply to them anyways. So especially for an event like this, they'll all park there. We do have a program for the employees where they can purchase, purchase permits for specified areas that allow them to exceed the time limits that are there for their employees.
Commissioner Kurkjian, our police department's traffic enforcement bureau checks these even free parking lots on a regular basis and cites the violators.
The employees that you mentioned, or the business owners, how much they pay if they have to pay, pay the, purchase the permit, the meter, the permit parking space?
The permits are $120 per year per permit.
That's fair. I think the fee increase is okay, and it's not even enough, in my opinion. I think we need to increase this a little more for us to have more turnover there on Honolulu, and that money could, we could be used for something else to advertise Montrose. Because the stores, restaurants are getting even nicer, nicer and nicer over there, and maybe a year later, after everything is okay today, we have to revisit the issue to, for another increase a year later, since you're moving with the association. The goal here is to promote business, and, and get the word out that we have 589 parking spaces over there, free, for public use, and for the benefit of the businesses there.
You're, you're preaching to the choir, because staff had a recommendation about five, six years ago, they even had a study, to turn all the, all the free lots behind the businesses into paid parking, to generate enough money to build the parking structure. But there's a business community that was opposed to it, and, and it gets very complicated. It's something maybe that we can sit down and discuss it with staff on a, on a different occasion. We need some time, you will need some time to get into the details.
Okay.
I'll be more than happy to do that. Thank you, any other questions?
I have a question. The additional revenue that comes in from this, I understand that's of, you anticipate a $50,000 increase. Is that money going to stay specific to Montrose, or does that go to a general fund for the city?
Commissioner Bartusov, that does stay in a, inside the parking fund, and it will stay in the Montrose Shopping Park. We're looking at using that to, for some long-term planning.
Okay, do you know what, what long-term planning, what that is, or?
Well, at, at the time, we're operating in the red, and so I think approximately $30,000 a year of that was just to plug the hole, so to speak. So there wasn't going to be a large surplus left over after that, and we don't, we don't have any money allocated for maintenance, long-term stuff for the lots. We just did a slurry project up there last year for the bulk of the parking lots, and, and that money was, what came out of the parking fund, but it was, it was something that we didn't have budgeted for ongoing.
I think it's an interesting concept of, of keeping the revenues from parking to the, to the localized place. I know that there has been studies with Pasadena where they started charging for on-street parking and kept the money in downtown Pasadena, and that helped fund improvements for pedestrians, street lighting, street furniture. So I really support that idea, so I'm glad that the money's staying local.
Chairperson Sahakian, Commissioner Bartusov, we also, there's a potential for us to consider and explore the option of digital meters in that shopping park, as we have done elsewhere in downtown Glendale. If there are no further questions, can we move the motion? Second?
Second.
Roll, please.
Commissioner Kurkjian?
Yes.
Mr. Yakubian? Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Bartusov?
Yes.
Chairperson Sahakian?
Yes.
Thank you. And with that, we go to item number six.
Commission staff comments updates.
Comments, commissioners?
I wanted to see if there was any update about Seeklevia. I know that Metro had a call for projects earlier this year, and we, we weren't prepared to apply for it this time around. Do we have any timeline on when that might be happening again, or if the city's preparing to apply for, for a call for project, if it does come?
Chairperson Sahakian, members of the commission, commission, we have not started the process, we have been talking about it, and we need just to remobilize this year and see if we can put in a successful application for Seeklevia through Glendale.
I do want to encourage anybody that hasn't been to one, there is, the next Seeklevia is coming up on Sunday.
Yes.
It's going to be in South LA along Central and MLK. I believe it's from nine to three, RMU. Yes, and then there's one scheduled in March in the Valley, from the North Hollywood Station. It's, it's proposed, not yet finalized, down Lancashire onto Ventura and Studio City, so...
It's finalized.
Very exciting, oh, it's finalized?
It's finalized.
Very good. Very exciting event, if you haven't been to it, I encourage you to attend.
Indeed.
Yes, I was really pleased to read an article in the LA Times, I guess it's the California section, and I was hoping that maybe staff could give us an update on some decisions that were made at Metro, and relative to the east-west line for rolling stock. I believe there wasn't money that was set aside, but the principle of studying, getting the communities together, and I forget what that line is called, I really, if we can get an update next time, it would really be helpful, because it seemed like a really positive initiative, and, and I think it's between Burbank, I should say, among Burbank, Glendale, and Pasadena, and Metro. And, but it's not light rail, it's rolling stock, I'm almost sure, and it would be really interesting to see how that is being looked at relative to any other future connections of the light rail, because we, we continue to be an island relative to the future of connectivity to public transportation. It's, it's really unfortunate for our city to be in that position. But this looks like a first step, but I was hoping it wouldn't be a first step, that it would get in the way of other studies.
Mr. Kurkjian?
Mr. Golanyan, it was unfortunate that in the last couple of months, we had a couple more pedestrian accidents, and one of them is the area where we walked on with the task force, with the Berkeley folks. Can you elaborate the exact, I mean, if you can elaborate, if there's no police investigations, what went wrong over there with that accident on Broadway and Kenwood, I believe it is? It was, and where we're at with this pedestrian safety right now?
Chairperson Sahakian, members of the commission, I believe that accident happened at Broadway and Isabel.
Isabel, yeah, Kenwood, yeah.
You are correct, it's still under investigation. I haven't heard what the final determination was as who was at fault, but the driver was a young man, in his twenties, I believe. But the cause, I do not know as of now. As far as the pedestrian safety task force, we, as you know, we generated recommendations, we have compiled them into a score sheet. Each and every recommendation has been assigned to a member of the task force and/or a team to follow through and bring it back to the task force, and provide an update on a quarterly basis. So all the task force members have their assignments, they're working on them. When is our next meeting, Anush, do you know? So in January, we should be able to, to have a status update on all of the recommendations. We also have been asked by city council, I've been asked to, to take a report back to them on the status of all the actions that I, we have undertaken.
What about the overpasses with Metro that we spoke about during our last meetings?
Yes, that was going to be the list of my comments, it's on the list, but you're talking about the Doran?
Doran, yes.
Yes, Doran Great Crossing. Metro staff and their consultant are, excuse me, have scheduled another community meeting for December 9th at 6:30 PM at Environmental Management Center on Flower Street, I believe, at 7:80 Flower Street, is coming, not coming, Tuesday, December 9th. They, they want to go over the analysis of the alternatives, and that they have been studying for the last few months. They're hoping to release the EIR early next year. That's, that's the status on that project.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a couple of comments, and I did call Mr. Golanyan on one occasion on this, and that's basically traffic management during our construction projects throughout the city. I feel that there's no oversight, I don't know if we require them to submit plans and we approve them and they implement them accordingly, but a couple of occasions, one occasion, Driving Mountain, going in the eastbound direction, just at the two freeways up on RM, Glendale Water and Power Construction at 7:00 AM in the morning, maintaining only one lane. It was backed up to Nibley Park, there is no reason for that, there isn't. Not only that, it went through rush hour traffic, PM rush hour traffic, and icing on the cake was they left everything in place, instead of plating it, restoring the two lanes for following morning, everything was left in place until next day. So they went back and they continued construction. This will not fly in other cities, I guarantee you that. So it's something that I strongly feel we need to correct. The resurfacing project on Glendale Boulevard and on Verdigo Road, the way they shifted traffic to coal plant and asphalt half the street at a time, when I was there, I ran dead against runway traffic. They basically put me in a lane and I came head-to-head with uncoming traffic, and right in front of me, the people laying the cones, they realized what they did. But I think the confusion is because there's no plan, there's just, the paving company hires this traffic control company, or maybe they do their own, and the foreman tells them, "Okay, take half the street," they go lay some cones, there's no taper lengths, nothing is done per MUTCD requirements, a huge liability to the city, a huge, and I don't know if we've had any accidents during this period, but it's something that we need to correct. And I called Mr. Golanyan with my concern, and, you know, as we expand and we have more construction in the city, the work hours is a concern, even if they're doing it correctly, I feel that, you know, when people are going to work, when they're dropping off their kids at school, we need to accommodate that, we cannot, it took me 17 minutes, because I used my iPhone, the timer on my iPhone, from Escanoia and Mountain to the two freeway. That's not right, it's just not right. And if it's a convenience issue because they want to get in there and do the work, well, it was an emergency, I can tell you that, because it's for the new development. So we need to dictate that, the city, your department, our department, needs to dictate that, the work hours on that. That's it, that's the only comment I have, and I do have questions about, you know, the next meeting, I know it's something you will touch on.
Yes. Thank you, Chairperson Sahakian. Your points are well-taken and are very valid points. I just want to reassure you and the commission that we do require a traffic control plan from every single contractor who does work in the city, large-scale.
Large-scale, yes.
And they follow the MUTCD, and we review it based on the MUTCD rules and regulations. Sometimes what happens, and it happened with the Glendale Avenue project, it was a very long project, it spanned from, all the way from Broadway to Chevy Chase. The traffic control plans, I recall, there were 46 sheets, very detailed, it was done professionally, stamped by a registered traffic engineer. The problem becomes enforcing it and following it, and you are absolutely correct. We have an approved set of plans, I have two inspectors on that large project, and everything's happening at the same times, so the contractor is probably at fault for not following the approved plans, and I have requested and I have directed my staff to put more inspection staff on construction of that nature-
Yes.
-and that size and magnitude, just to ensure that the contractor follows the approved traffic control plans.
And even if obviously hiring, you know, full-time employees for inspection is not feasible, because these large projects are not, you know, ongoing all the time, maybe they could be included in the request for proposal to bring in inspectors just for those big projects, not to be a burden on city staff, because I know you guys are short-handed and you're busy.
Absolutely, and that's what we do. We only have two full-time inspectors, the rest of our inspectors are on hourly and temporary, project-based.
Deputy inspectors? I mean, some cities, they bring in retired, you know, inspectors on a 90-day contract, there's all kinds of things that you can do here. Any other comments?
Yes, actually, I have several, going back to a question that we were not able to answer, the taxi gap ordinance went into effect in 2003.
2003.
As a result of a recent restructuring and reorganization, we have moved our transit operations from Public Works to Community Development Department. That includes Dial-A-Ride, the access program, as well as the Beeline services. This started about a week or two weeks ago. So in the future, when items related to those operations come before you, you will, you may see other managers and directors present instead of me.
Is it possible to get an org chart?
Absolutely. Very good. And this group will be joined with the Transportation and Mobility Planning, and this will create a new division, essentially. It just made sense to, and there's some synergy between those operations to be joined On December 16th, we will take an item, staff report to city council, to adjust the meeting frequency of a couple of commissions, and we had contemplated going quarterly meetings for Transportation and Parking Commission, but we have decided on holding these commission meetings on every other month, starting January or February. We haven't decided when that will go into effect, but since we had a special meeting this evening, well, next meeting will probably be in February and then every other month.
And with the understanding that if there are items that we need to hear, you can always call a special-
Absolutely, Chairperson Sahakian, if there is an item that cannot wait a month, month and a half, or two months, we can always call a special meeting.
Okay.
Question, please, is that Monday, fourth Monday still, or third, or has that yet to be determined?
Monday of- Yeah, fourth Monday of every other month, yes.
Fourth Monday.
Starting February.
Starting February. And we already have items scheduled for that evening. I understand that we, at least a couple of commissioners, had asked presentation from ride-sharing services such as Uber and Lyft. We haven't been able to secure any presentation from Uber, but Anush had distributed folders that they submitted for your information, but Anush has been able, and she's been in contact with Lyft, and I think they're willing to make a presentation and will schedule that for you in the near future.
That's great.
The rest of these items, we already talked about during our questions and answers.
And I think there's a city event coming up for Christmas?
Yes, there is an Employee Human Relations Committee organized holiday party this-
Friday, right?
No, this Thursday evening at the Civic Center, Civic Auditorium.
I do recall RSVPing, I think, we did receive an email on it.
There's the holiday Christmas tree lighting tomorrow evening in the plaza.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Thank you.